I'd like to call the order of the Oxford Area Cable Communications Commission meeting for Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Can we please stand and pay our respects to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Oh, Mo's not here. Uh, Terry, can you do?
Sure, roll call. Um, attendance?
Everything?
Yes.
Karen Guybel?
Here.
Ed Hunwick?
Here.
John Hawkins?
Yeah.
Catherine Colvin?
Here.
And that's it, right? No mo. Sorry, you threw me off guard there for a second.
It's okay.
So since Maureen's not here, I guess we'll have an agenda issue.
Well, so far.
We'll wait and see if she shows up. Okay, uh, item for approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
We have a motion, it's been supported, all in favor. Aye. Opposed. Public comment, some items not on the agenda. Nothing. Nobody has anything.
Well, he gave a thumbs up, that's a good comment.
It's a comment, I guess.
It wasn't verbal.
That's a good comment.
Minutes from the meeting of September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the September twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five meeting as presented.
Support.
We have a motion, it's been supported, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay. Page seven is the total, but seven A, the expense bill, uh, or revenue run for, um, nine twenty-two through eleven-three. I have a question before we take a vote on that, just maybe I've asked this in the paper. What is storybooks?
Storyblocks.
Or storyblocks?
We have it. Um, so that is an app that we've used for either just before we moved or when we first moved into the building and it, um, we are able to grab little video clips. So say we wanna say Merry Christmas and have a fireplace in the background and crackling fire. We'll grab, um, those video clips. So in the past, and that I will also explain that with the amendment that I'm proposing. In the past, it was under just my name. That's how we set it up. Well, they discovered that we were a business, I didn't realize there was a difference between my name, me, a personal, and a business when I set it up. Well, they're charging us for the past seven years worth of video blocks.
How can they charge us retroactively?
Because of the copyright issues.
Did you?
Because we've put them on YouTube and Facebook and on the air and there's copyright issues there that we didn't pay for. We didn't pay for the copyrights for that.
So this goes back seven years?
Well, so it's seven thousand dollars and they're letting me pay it quarterly.
Seven thousand dollars?
So there's a different fee for an individual versus a business for a copyright issue?
Never knew that, never, I was never told that, we were not explained any of that.
What's?
I don't, they changed their, um, administrative business mode and I think that's where they caught it.
Can we not go back to them and say like you were not advised and put in their court?
Hmm, no, there are gonna be legal issues with that and they just said, let's just put it all under the bridge. We'll change it to your name, pay off the seven thousand dollars and then we'll take it from there. And I'm like, okay, I understand.
They didn't notify you though, it's me, oh.
I guess they probably did notify her in some small.
Somewhere, somewhere along the line, I have no idea.
What? What's the term that they use for, um, the duration of time?
Waiver, latches?
Latches.
No, well.
Sketchy limitations.
Statute of limitations. Isn't that applicable to something like that, seven years?
We're currently using it, I mean, we've been using it.
Yeah, but they didn't bill you for it.
They've been billing us all along and we've been paying for the personal amount. We've paid how much a year for that? Like three hundred or something.
Yeah, that's really low. A year?
What is in, what, I mean, did you sign a contract?
No.
Well, I don't understand how they can hold our feet to the fire for that.
I agree.
Well, we're culpable because we've been using their service.
Well.
If we didn't sign a contract, wow.
Because we've been basically stealing their video if we're not gonna pay for it.
Maybe we should, is there any way to have an attorney review whatever they're sending to you and see if there's, you know, are there concerns about a copyright claim or are there not, like? Because yeah, there's a lot of, I mean, I don't know if there's no written contract.
Seven grand's a lot of money.
I know it is.
I would like to see it reviewed by an attorney, I guess, uh, just to, because I, I, I don't understand how they can go back seven years and say you're gonna pay us all this back money. That doesn't make any sense.
Well, they have a record of everything that we've used.
So be it, but it's still seven years ago.
No, it's not seven years ago, it's been since seven years. We've been using it all along for seven years.
Well, what's the difference? Seven years ago is when you started using it. And they're going back seven years. I don't understand how they can go back that far.
I don't know, when they told me there's copyright issues and we could be liable and.
They could say anything just to try and get you to pay something.
All right, well, I can have Mike Watzl review the contract.
Did you pay it?
We've paid two thousand so far because they said we could pay them quarterly.
Is that admission of guilt?
Pretty much.
This isn't a criminal, it's not a criminal, it's not a criminal matter. I don't know, but at this point, yeah, if you first started paying, I don't know what that, my thought was if you had to pay an attorney, you know, an hour's worth of time or so, it might be worth getting a legal opinion on whether you owe the money, but yeah, I don't know, if you already paid, you paid two of the seven thousand already? I mean, maybe Mike, would he take a phone call and say, is this, do you have a minute or what's this worth to review because?
He'll charge me for sure.
Well.
Yeah, I'll call him and find out.
I mean, he might just tell you on a fifteen-minute phone call, pay the bill, or he might say it's gonna take me an hour or two to review. But, I mean, if you don't have a contract, I don't even know what he'd be reviewing. Their invoice, their.
What did they send you, an email or a letter?
Well, they cut us off and then they sent us an email and they sent me another email and then we started emailing.
So what was the, what was the downside if you didn't pay it?
Copyright issues and.
Were they gonna sue us?
They threatened.
Yeah, they would, yes, because we used.
Well, that's what they're threatening.
Written material.
I bet you can get that thing, stuff off of YouTube.
Did you have to agree to their terms and conditions like when you signed up for it?
I don't even recall, I don't know, probably. Probably wouldn't let me go to the next page till then. Well, I must have because I knew that we had to pay three hundred a year, I think is what it was.
I mean, it's, I don't know anything about copyright law, but if they're charging a different fee for an individual versus a business and there's a authority for that, then so be it, but is there an authority for them to do that? I don't know, I mean, is it a contractual thing? I don't know.
This doesn't seem right, they can go back seven years. I can see if they went back a year or two, but seven?
I feel like part of this is kinda like what I do for my job, I'm an IT buyer. But, uh, I feel like it's something you could at least negotiate something if you are planning to use them forward, don't just say, here, we pay seven thousand to keep doing it, say, no, if you want us to continue business with you, maybe we meet somewhere in the middle, if, if it legal doesn't approve it, at least, I don't know, to me it's like you want the partnership between them if they're, if you are gonna use their service.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, at least.
We're continuing to use the service.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think a negotiation, uh, session could have taken place to try to resolve the full seven grand instead of paying it.
What's the difference between the three hundred dollar fee that you were paying and what, what's the fee now?
It's seven thousand a year.
Seven thousand a year?
Yes, for a business, so I figured, okay, we'll pay the seven thousand off now and we won't use them after July.
So they're charging you only for one year?
Oh, they're not charging you going back seven years.
Well, we've been using it for seven years, that's the issue that they had. So they're charging us as a business now, we're paying that and, and I won't use them in July if we can't afford it.
So they're not charging us for seven years ago, they're only charging us for this current year?
Okay, yes, but they're charging us for using it for seven years.
That's a different story, I thought they were going back seven years.
I thought it was like a thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, right.
No, I'm sorry, no.
So the fee is seven grand a year? Good lord, that's a lot of money.
Seventy-two.
And you can't just like, I mean, you think that's a benefit, that's, that's something that the station uses?
No, I'm gonna reassess that now, I mean, seven thousand dollars is a lot of money for how often we use it, although Joe uses it quite a bit, we've all used it quite a bit. There's no doubt.
It's like, they provide the background is what they do?
We've used.
What do they provide, the service provides?
So say you wanna use a waterfall for something.
Yeah.
We give video, three or four minutes worth of video of waterfalls or, like I said, fireplace burning in the background, or, give me some more examples.
We used to do like the blood drive for.
Oh, yeah.
Next door, we'd use stories of people getting blood.
Gotcha.
Bizarre stuff that we couldn't just normally go out and get.
YouTube.
Well, that's another issue, using somebody else's material.
Okay, I agree with you.
We have to be very careful about that kind of stuff. Which is why I was like, okay, we'll pay it because we've been using it for seven years. Basically for free without covering their, um, copyright guarantees.
Okay, I, what you're telling now, it's a different situation, you're paying for a year.
Yes.
Seven.
Using it for seven years.
All right. All right, okay, I, that's a whole different scenario.
That's very expensive.
Well.
So you will see that charge quarters for the next three quarters.
You're gonna pursue other options?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know what you guys do, I mean, you guys are on the station, I, that's, you know what your budget is and what you can live with, but, um, I just wanted to know what it was when I saw it on there. I never saw that before.
Right.
Okay.
It's always just been roped into our internet.
Um, going back to what I originally stated before, the, the bill review, seven A, page eleven, or seven. If there's anybody with any questions, concerns, comments about anything being admitted for, that was the only thing that stood out in, in my head when I saw that.
I guess if there's no other comments, I'd make a motion to approve the bill, revenue bill run for approval in the amount of forty-two thousand, five hundred ninety-two dollars and sixty cents.
I'll support.
We have a motion, it's been supported. Oh, we gotta wave our hands or something, I feel.
Did you see me dancing? Did you get that on film?
All right, we have a motion, it's been supported, we need a roll call, please.
Um, Catherine Colvin?
Yes.
Uh, Karen Guybel?
Yes.
John Hawkins?
Yes.
And Jeff Harvey?
Yes. Uh, let's see, we can rope seven B and C into one, uh, the year-to-date revenue and expense report and the general ledger distribution report. Pages twelve through thirteen and fourteen through seventeen.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the year-to-date revenue and expense report through October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five and the general ledger distribution reports for September and October of two thousand and twenty-five.
Support.
We have a motion, it's been supported, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. So we have, uh, item eight, which is three items to receive and file, the Michigan class investment uh, pool statement indicating our, or the bulk of our funds are. The Oakland County Investment Pool, which was our previous, uh, banker, I guess, there were, we only have around five hundred bucks in. And I will just do those two and I'll do C later.
I just have a question or a comment or whatever, observation, if we keep taking twenty thousand dollars out of this Michigan class account and there's only a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars in there, we're looking at like in the next seven months, we're done with that money?
Well, we'll continue to get franchise fees, but yeah, if we.
Right, but if we're living on borrow, the money that we're taking out of the savings, at some point we're gonna need to reduce the expenses by twenty grand and that's like in less than eight months, right? Am I reading that right?
Well, yes, but it'll, there'll also be.
Recoupment of other fees.
Money put back in.
Got it.
Franchise fees go back in, so if you, yes, it goes down, not necessarily twenty thousand a month, it'll go back up again because we received more franchise fees in the last couple of weeks.
Oh, I see, okay.
So it, yeah, it fluctuates like that, but it, we've had a dramatic loss. Last year, or maybe the year before last, we had two hundred and six thousand in there, as a rule, it stayed steady. But yeah, we continue to lose money, that's why I've been tooting that horn.
Well, you're still reco, recovering franchise fees for this, uh, year through February, right?
Yeah, that's how it goes, um.
February of next year.
Yes, so the February, well, so the first quarter of next year will be our final quarter of two thousand and twenty-four.
Five.
I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-five, yeah. But then we don't get the final quarter of two thousand and twenty-six until two thousand and twenty-seven, it's a strange way to do it.
Yeah, I guess maybe we need to sit down in, uh, early spring and review the.
Yep.
See where we're at.
Which is why the entire staff agreed and we all talked about it and volunteered, which is why we haven't worked on Fridays this year, I had no idea how our budget was gonna come in. So we, not the whole year, from Sept, uh, July on, we've saved money by the staff not working on Fridays. And we actually came in ahead this year. But if it keeps up, we won't next year. However, Addison committed to the two years of, um, full franchise fees, but we didn't see those full franchise fees until the third quarter. Because the quarter from two thousand and twenty-four was half.
Got it.
And the first quarter from two thousand and twenty-five was half because they didn't reach until March.
Got it.
But yeah, I'm concerned. I really am.
All right.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the Michigan class investment report and the Oakland County Investment Pool uh, report as presented.
I'll support.
We have a motion, it's been supported, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, HC, the status of House Bill five-one-two-three, Terry.
So about a month and a half ago, this bill was introduced to the House, I found out through Josh Schreber, Trevor. Um, it's identical to forty-nine sixty-three, sixteen, what was it, forty-nine sixty-five from last year? Um, however, it's kind of stalled again and they won't even be looking at it till January. But the head of the committee in the House is all for it. So all of us need to continue to contact our representatives, our senators, and I will send out contact information and let them know how it's really gonna hurt communities because if that bill passes, that streamers don't have to pay anything for using our rights-of-way, next comes AT&T, Comcast and Charter. And we're losing a lot of franchise fees right now because AT&T, Comcast and Charter are starting to stream. They're moving people over to it. We're seeing some fluctuation, some people are saying, I just can't pay that kind of money, especially like in Leonard and the Village of Oxford, there's our Comcast, or excuse me, our, uh, Spectrum fees are going up a little bit because it's an older community and they're saying, I can't do it. So it's fluctuating, but not enough. So I will send out, uh, information, contact information to everybody and if you would tell your boards, I'd appreciate it. And I've sent out letters to, um, the supervisors of both communities and the village manager uh, um, in Oxford, letting them know what's going on.
So just so I'm clear, the, this bill is to, um, not include streaming as part of the franchise fee process?
As a video delivery service, right.
So like Spectrum, which is the cable provider here in Oxford.
And Comcast.
They're converting all of us to streaming.
So far, they've committed to still pay the franchise fee, but I'm sure they're waiting for the results of this bill. And then what?
And then we'll be done.
Yeah. Well, let's see how things play out, uh.
Um, I have a letter from Josh explaining exactly what that's about if you'd like to read it in your spare time.
What does the acronym P R W refer to?
Public.
Public right of way.
Public right of way, okay. All right, uh, do we need a, do we need to vote on Terry's comments?
No, it's just a status update.
It could've been in your manager's report, I guess.
Pardon me?
I said that could've been part of your manager's report, maybe.
It's, probably is.
All right, discussion of the next OACC meeting date, so, uh, for two thousand and twenty-six, if you look in your packet.
January twenty-third.
We have January, March, May, July, September, November, so.
If you wanna just discuss the very next meeting date, that's fine.
The next meeting date would be January twenty-six.
However, if Mo does not show up before we have to approve the budget, we'll have to have a special meeting in December.
Oh.
We need a super quorum.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't think Mo's coming.
And I haven't heard from her, I usually do.
Well, I'm assuming then we will have to have a special meeting in December at this point, since she's not here.
These are just two thousand and twenty-six dates, so I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-six meeting dates as presented.
Support.
We have a motion, it's been supported, we don't need roll call for this, do we? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Okay, so we can't do the budget amendments, can we?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Budget amendments.
Cause it shifts the money around.
We can't do the full budget, okay.
Yeah, all right, so item ten A, pages twenty-one to twenty-three, we have budget amendments.
So I don't, we have your explanation, so the, um, the one for, uh, nine twenty-one zero zero zero, utilities electric, we made, in March, we made an amendment to that to reduce, uh, sorry, to, um, change it from fifty-four hundred dollars to fifty-eight. And instead, I don't know where it happened, but somehow it ended up getting added. So we ended up in our budget line item with eleven thousand, two hundred. So Susan needs us to re-amend it so that they can correct their figures here. So that needs to be approved by the board.
So you, you want to amend the budget from eleven-two to fifty-eight?
Correct.
Okay.
The next one, um, I budgeted ten thousand dollars for our insurance and this has never happened before, I don't know how they've paid it before, but the township took an additional two thousand, six hundred, two thousand, two hundred and sixty-five, sixty-eight from that line item to pay workman's comp, which they pay it from, to their insurance company. Um, and so I ended up two thousand dollars short on that budget.
Well, isn't, isn't that money in the budget anywhere?
There wasn't enough, is what she's saying.
There wasn't enough, I, I wasn't aware that we paid an extra amount to the township for workman's comp. We don't have it in our policy, I double-checked.
So we're paying twelve thousand, two sixty-five for our general liability, our workers' comp, your auto, for your, your vehicle. Is that all in the same insurance?
No, the vehicle's separate, but it's on that line item. But it's in that line item, but it's to a different policy folder.
But it's part of this total?
Yes.
That's what she's saying.
Right, I'm just like all your insurance altogether. Auto, general liability, workers' compensation, whatever else there might be.
Yeah, it's for everything, yes, auto, van, everything.
But it's as the van.
As a van, right. So I'm, I'm going to talk with Decker to see if that workman's comp premium can come down because what we're paying here through the township is being, um, their premium is distributed through even Parks and Recs and the Fire Department and they have a higher liability than we could ever have. So I'm wondering if the liability could come down through Decker, so I need to check.
Isn't the economies of scale working in our favor with this because of the bigger group?
They, the way Curtis explained it to me is they averaged it out between all the departments. And the, the fire liabilities, who, premium is huge and so too is Parks and Recs. Their premium is quite.
So they divide it equally?
Something, a percentage, it's done by a percentage.
Still think we would probably be better off being with the township than going on our own, no?
Yeah, well, of course, because the eyes have a better deal, but it wouldn't hurt for me to check with Decker for next year to see if they can bring that premium down a little bit.
Okay.
Um, okay, sorry, and then, uh, the storyblocks, I already explained to you, that's why I've increased it by three hundred. The amendment. So all in all, it's three amendments.
So the total you're looking to move is twenty-five sixty-five grand total? Taking everything into account? From the general fund?
Um, no. Sorry, I didn't put a total on that. It's the fifty-four. Fifty-four is going, yes, it's twenty-five sixty-five plus three hundred.
Oh, the fifty-four is going back into the general fund? And then you're picking this part out of the general fund to accommodate the other two, all right.
It's coming ahead, the general fund is coming ahead by putting the fifty-four back in. It just needs to be approved by this board so Susan can fix these figures.
Yeah. Any questions? A motion here.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented at page twenty-one.
I'll support.
We have a motion, it's been supported for item ten A, roll call, please.
John Hawkins?
Yes.
Catherine Colvin?
Yes.
Karen Guybel?
Yes.
Ed Hunwick?
Yes. Ten B, we cannot address because we do not have the proper. Ten B, we cannot address because we do not have the proper quorum. Um.
Do you want to table it or set it aside? Some motion.
What, do we have to approve it in December before the end of the year? We should probably talk about a date, 'cause it's a crazy month.
Agreed.
Do you want to, I mean?
Um.
I guess, but do we even know? We need to make sure that Mo or Joe can be here, right?
Yeah, and I can, um.
I think we probably need you to.
Contact.
Well, what's a good day for everybody in December, I mean?
It would have to be before the twenty-second for me, 'cause I'll be out in California.
Before the twenty-second?
I think before the twenty-second would be necessary.
I'm free on the ninth, the eleventh, sixteen, seventeen.
Which, what days are you looking at first?
My day.
The ninth?
Uh, excuse me, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the next week. I can make myself available for any one of those days. The Monday, the eighth.
Tuesday, what, I don't know. My, my daughter's in town. I don't, my wife will kill me if I'm not available for something.
Currently, she's in town?
Well, she comes in day after tomorrow for Thanksgiving week. I don't want to hear. Um, I think Wednesday, beyond.
Let me dance.
I think Wednesday.
Tenth.
Going forward, I'm okay, for the most part. Depending on what day, I mean, I.
Wednesday, the tenth, is shot with a hero in the evening, so we won't get Joe Mador. Tuesday, Tuesday's open the ninth.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, the ninth. What day is she coming in?
Oh, that, she'd be gone by then.
Tuesday, the ninth?
I mean, I suppose, I mean, what about, I don't have my calendar.
Other calendar, but I think I'm good on Tuesday the ninth. I think so.
Are we talking at four-thirty, or are we talk, uh, I mean, is four-thirty the only time during the day you can meet?
Uh, it depends. I can look at my schedule.
No, I could, I could meet different times.
What about you?
Probably, yeah, I think. I'm pretty flexible these days.
Yeah, I could do Tuesday the ninth, and I'm flexible in time. But you need to check with Mo.
Yep.
Mo or Joe.
I'll call both of them and, um, let you know.
Yeah, send an email out, and then we'll confirm. Do you have to, wait a minute, do you have to have a, a lead time to have a public meeting? Don't you have to notify the public?
I just have to send it to the township. And according to Curtis, our budget's already approved by, based on the one that I gave them in August with one, maybe one and a half.
Yeah, but that aside, I mean, we're approving our budget. Do, we don't have to have a two-week lead time to go in the paper or anything, oh, okay. All right, so, ten B, we're not acting on, ten C, proposed twenty, I thought we just did that.
We did, we voted on it earlier.
Yep.
Proposed twenty-six holidays.
This is assuming you're not working on Fridays again?
Yes.
So.
Tell free the notice.
You want us to, um, what, um?
We just need approval for these paid holidays.
For these holidays?
Yeah, for the paid, the holidays.
Or they're not recognized at all nationally if we don't approve them?
We take the same days off that the township takes off, and we just need to have that approved every year.
Oh, I thought that was a given.
We'll make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six holiday schedule as presented.
Support.
We have a motion, supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There was a question on the budget that I want to ask, even though we're not addressing it, but I want to ask.
Okay.
So, I don't forget.
Okay.
So, Addison, I think it was Addison, in the revenue portion of the budget, you had initially, for this year, um, zero dollars in franchise fees.
Addison, which, um, Comcast or Spectrum?
It wasn't revenue, it was expenses, not revenue. Yeah, but it wasn't.
What we pay out?
You were, um, you paid out eighteen thousand to Addison. They're the, oh, yeah, here it is. No, it's back in revenue again.
It's line item eight hundred oh oh one, two nine six eight hundred zero zero one.
Why is all this revenue? Revenue, revenue.
Revenue's at the top.
Huh?
Revenue's at the top.
I got revenue at the bottom, too. Oh, this.
No, that's just your total.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay. So, Addison is getting paid, is, we're paying them eighteen thousand. Why are they only, they're the only ones getting money from us?
It's the half back that's.
But I thought other, uh, communities were only giving us fifty percent.
It depends on how they pay us. Addison can forward the whole amount, and we pay them back. The village keeps their half, and, and we don't have to pay them.
Why does Addison, why don't they just keep their half? And send us our half?
Hasn't, hasn't it always been that way, that you have to actually reimburse?
I guess I just needed that.
I'm not accountant, so don't ask those questions.
Right, when Lori took over from Dan Alberti, that's how we did it. We started doing that.
All right.
Now, it won't matter, because they're gonna pay the whole amount.
Thank God.
Well, at least for a couple of years.
Half anyhow.
Right.
All right, Terry, your report?
Um, so, the end of this year, I want to say, we're, um, seventeen thousand dollars ahead. If you look at the amended budget, we ended up seventeen ahead.
Okay.
Um, I'm hoping, based on, I, I cut everything down as far as I could possibly cut it down based on, I figured out what we started with last year. Sorry, twenty-twenty-five, what we expended in twenty-twenty-five, and based on, um, the revenues that we received in twenty-twenty-five, I tried to cut everything back at least two percent. And hopefully, fingers crossed, we come out okay. I didn't have to borrow as much from the general fund on this budget. Last year, it was sixty-seven thousand. This year, it's fifty-six thousand. I also, um, cut us forty thousand in wages. I don't know how we're gonna do it, except for cut programming and hours.
What's his, um, opportunity with, uh, Brandon?
So, that's in my manager's report, but, um, that would bring us probably eight grand a year. Not a lot.
No.
And I, I never figure Leonard in, 'cause I never know what we're gonna get from them. We still, it's very haphazard. But it's on, uh, it's somewhere between two thousand and five thousand a year. So, there's some variables in all of it, for sure. And I, again, was on the conservative side with everything I figured out. So, now that Mo's not here, you have time to go over this budget, and really, I mean, compared to what we did last year, look at it from this year to last year, this year to next year. It wasn't easy. It took me about a month to work on it. And, and really, I didn't even get Addison's, um, second or third quarter, second quarter, until just last week. So, I have no idea how quickly people are taking themselves off of Comcast, uh, Charter and AT&amp;T unless I get those, uh, franchise fees in. And they're still declining between two and five thousand per community. It used to be fun to figure this budget out. Now, it's really scary because I don't want to lose anybody. I don't want to shorten. This poor guy bought a house the same month that we cut out Fridays.
Oh, jeez.
It's, um, it's amazing what the crew's done to keep us going. So, there's our budget for next year. Hopefully, we'll come ahead.
Manager's report?
Oh, yeah.
Isn't that what you were?
No, she was still talking about the budget.
She was still talking budget.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
And then I was thinking you have to approve it, so, um, so the manager, I'm gonna pass out some more stuff. This is just, um, it looks like the federal government is kind of moving in the same direction as the state of Michigan, um, as far as streamers are concerned. And so, MICMA, um, let's see, Natoa, um, um, a lot, uh, the group for the MML and MTA are all writing letters to the federal government saying, "Please don't do this," because communities that don't pass their franchise fees along are gonna lose lots of money. And so, it's, there's noise going on in the federal government that they're doing the same thing. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. Um, also, if anybody would like to pass out surveys to anybody they know to help sponsor, I don't care if it's sports, if it's our, we have one program called the Running Commode. I don't care what program, if somebody wants to sponsor it, we'll take sponsorships.
Commode?
Yeah, we have.
What on earth is that?
I don't want to know.
It's actually a very cute show. One of, um, the chamber members comes in monthly, and he brings a fix-it, uh, service into the, the studio, and they talk about grading your property correctly, et cetera. You know, just help, helpful hints around the house. Um, so, this month, we've passed out those surveys to the businesses downtown. I either handed out or mailed two hundred, and I haven't heard back from anybody yet. Um, next week, Chuck and myself are going to each one of the businesses to collect those surveys at least and talk to them about sponsorships. The sponsorship I told you about the last time we met through, um, the Wildcat Boosters never came through. I, I tried several times to contact them, and they didn't respond. Um, we set up at the Business Expo. We get tons of feedback from the community. It's just, nobody's willing to put out, but they love having us here. They want us to stay. We wrapped up the sports season with a smaller crew, so my, this, our staff is amazing. They're here because they want to be here, not because they're getting paid. Um, it's amazing what they've sacrificed to keep us going. Um, we're, we're gonna continue to stay close on Fridays. Um, NES had to come out again. We had another, that's the third bird that plugged up our exhaust system, and NES kept telling me, "No, don't put a screen on it because then things get stuck on it, and that, that'll mess up our system." Well, you know, I've had to pay them two hundred dollars every time they come out. So, they finally did install a screen on that. Um, guardian alarm malfunction again, that's happened a couple of times, so that was unexpected repairs. Um, Joe worked the, with the downtown business owners this past couple of weeks to produce a muted, music promo video. Um, it's going to be scheduled to be aired on Fox Two, but there's also, um, a teaser out on our, it's on our Facebook page?
DDA.
On the DDA Facebook page. Um, it's also on my personal Facebook page, and I would encourage you to wa, watch it. It's really cute. Hopefully, the business owners can see what we can do and are willing to pay for commercials. We are promoting that as well, trying to, um, gain revenue that way.
When's it supposed to be on Fox Two?
Don't know, yeah. The, um, so, there's a new business owner in town. What's the name of her business, Joe?
Sh, Sherri's Amor.
Oh, Sherri Amor, Sherri Amor. Um, she's the one that put this whole thing together, and she's contacting, uh, Channel Two. Wednesday is what they're looking at for, uh, Shop Saturday, Shop Local Saturday. Um, we're continuing to grow YouTube and Facebook subscribers. In fact, our fifth grade concert had like forty-some thousand views. Um, we've submitted, oh, okay, so I'm, I've already submitted a proposal to the Village of Ortonville. Uh, tonight, they're having a meeting and talking about it. There's one other person. There's a husband and wife couple that has also submitted a proposal. Uh, my conversation with the village manager was long, and he sounded thrilled. I do know the village president and one of the village trustees, and they know our reputation. So, I'm hopeful. It's a good way to, eight thousand dollars is eight thousand dollars. Um, again, the, our name is around. The Dance Conservancy asked us again to cover their, um, production. Uh, we have a new, pardon me, oh, the Running Commode, new resident produce program. Um, and he's, he's gaining viewership. It's really cute. Um, well, now, oh, now that I've got the twenty-six budget done, and I've got a couple of years of declining budgets, hopefully, I'll be able to guess what our three-year budget, Mo wanted a five-year budget. I really can't see that we will be able to go that far unless things start turning around, or, so, uh, this new bill that's in the House, um, Protech, which, you're familiar with Protech. They're the attorneys that represent public access stations in Lansing. Protech, and then Oregon has, um, a lobbyist, are trying to convince whoever put fifty-one twenty-three out to just modify PA four eighty and just add like five cents per streamer for using our rights away. Um, that would gain a lot of money, and we'd be fine, and that way Charter, Comcast, and AT&amp;T would be okay paying franchise fees. So, we're still hoping that will happen. Nothing's gonna happen until January now. That's it. It's not as, it's not as, um, bright as I was hoping it would be at this point.
Right, it's really not bright.
It's appropriate.
It's very not bright. You are correct.
That's probably the sign, huh? All right, item twelve, committee reports. Uh, we have nothing to report on the technical committee, personnel committee. You've got nothing to talk about at this point, do you?
No, when do we meet? Not until after, do we meet this time of year? I forget.
January.
Normally in November, but we haven't.
It's November that we meet? Didn't we just meet?
It's been a whole year.
We can meet in January.
Well, we'll have to talk to Mo, so. No report.
Well, unless you want Joe to attend, Joe Mador. It depends on what's going on.
What's going on with Mo?
I'll talk to him about it when I call him.
Uh, commissioner of comments, Kathleen?
Uh, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Mr. John?
I've got nothing.
Kathleen, uh, Karen?
Happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
I, I as well wish everybody happy Thanksgiving. Public comments? Well, no, nothing.
Not even a thumbs up?
You know, you're as bad as Kyle.
Forced to stay out of it.
The people behind the camera don't see.
Item fifteen. Take a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
We have a motion that's been supported, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.